Got chips, Tom.
I couldn't move.
Sure.
This is called.
They have a big one. Oh, here it is.
It's hard.
No, no.
Well, working on.
Yeah.
Not, not so.
Yes.
I want to see.
I thought you came.
I think.
I'm asking where this is.
But I was.
Doesn't make no, doesn't make no.
You guys see what I'm saying?
Government has seen.
Probably them.
Probably.
Probably.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm late.
Right.
No.
He's the mayor.
Yeah.
So you're prepared for the same thing.
She's got that.
What happened?
Triple five.
Oh.
Two.
Well.
So.
First example.
She's.
Yeah.
Ha, ha.
Bro.
Been on Snapchat.
That's all.
Good.
Yeah.
He got a made up.
See, he called.
Yeah.
He's.
Yeah.
I like jelly.
I don't need sense.
You're seeing.
People in the eyes.
People in the eyes.
Stop, stop doing that.
People in the eyes.
Yeah.
A long.
The right thing.
I did it.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
With three.
TV.
Also, the, the.
If I didn't have it started.
Here's.
What'd you do?
Yeah, you could.
The, the.
You're somebody that loves to do.
Is that on? Bob Ward, I'll throw him this.
This is a hot chair.
Check it.
Okay.
It's a stormy.
Satisfied.
We weren't. Remember that time I set up there?
It's not, it's not really.
She liked the one that you did on the.
Yeah.
You've got some lines like that. Everything got the start.
I had time. Yeah, I, I don't know. That's fine.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's August 16th, 2022 City Council meeting. We've got a full crowd, so I'd like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices during our meeting. I would like to make a note that Councilmember Bob Ward is feeling under the weather this evening, and he will not be in attendance for tonight's meeting. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Kathy Hikes for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's all take a moment and take a deep breath. Mind ourselves that we are lucky enough to be able to do that. We are so grateful that we have been given a respite from the dog days of summer. The drier air reminds us of the cooler days of autumn around the corner now. The rain has helped our late season crops. We have been blessed with a very busy schedule at a surprising time of year. It seems after so many months, with our gaze directed on the health in our community, a pressure buildup for innovation and change, and that seems to be happening now. Help us to manage our growth while we enjoy its fruits. Bring healing to those who suffer. Mend rifts among families and neighbors. Bless our city employees and their families as they work to provide us with a good quality of life. Bless this council and give us wisdom and foresight in our deliberations. Guide us in promoting the well-being of all people so we may live in justice and peace.
Amen. Thank you. First item on our agenda is recognitions. The council, Burlington City Council, has a longstanding history of recognizing our Eagle Scouts, and I do want to, in addition to that, recognize we've got Mayor Steve Ross, former Mayor Steve Ross with us, who is an Eagle Scout. We've got former Mayor Ian Bautudes with us, who's an Eagle Scout. So it's good to have you guys with us this evening. But I'd like to recognize Hal Bates, our district chair, to maybe tell us a little bit about our scouting program and what we're doing tonight, and then we'll invite council to come down while we hand out certificates. Hal, welcome.
Thank you. And Mayor Butler has two sons that are Eagle Scouts. You failed to mention that.
That's right.
This is just a great opportunity to recognize our Eagle Scouts that achieved the Eagle Scout in the last 12 months. We have several that we're going to mention. Two are present. Unfortunately, some of them have gone on to the service. They've gone on to college and were unable to be here. So we'll mention their names, and they will also get a certificate. So starting off, I'd like to recognize Brandon Christopher Lee Brown.
Let's go ahead and have council come down.
The council come down first.
Yep. Now, Hal really wanted us to put him at the end of the agenda, but we thought we'd put him at the front.
Five dollars goes along. This is Brandon Christopher Lee Brown. He's a member of Troop 39, Alamance District, of Boy Scouts of America. For his community service project, he built picnic tables for the Allied Churches of Alamance County. Next, we have Darian Vincent Myers. He is a member of Troop 4047, Alamance District, of the Boy Scouts of America. For his community service project, he built four picnic tables for Eastern Alamance Hospital. There were several other scouts who earned their Eagle Scout Award who cannot attend tonight for various reasons, I said, but we want to recognize them as well. There's Logan Dean.
I'll go back up.
Can we get a group picture with the two scouts with them?
Okay. And I'll go ahead and give the name. Logan Dean, Hunter Friatus, Nicholas Wolfe, Zachary Wolfe, Grayson Everett, Anthony William Cobel, Ella Davis. I'm going to pause on Ella a minute. Ella is the first female that's gotten an Eagle Scout into Alamance District. And I hate she's not here tonight. She's a, she's a wonderful young lady. Any of you that don't know, make sure you congratulate them. See, Raleigh Dolls, Detland Jones, Thomas Knight, Reagan Morrison, Patrick Nadowski II, Eva Neiman, Connor Spitler, Carson Triplet, Carter Toomey, Isaac Toomey, Max Van Fleet, Dylan Walker, Jacob Wilkinson, Nathan Williams, and Ethan Wynn. So behalf of the mayor and the city council, we thank each of you for your hard work, obtaining the highest honor of Eagle Scout Award, and we encourage each of you to continue your commitment to excellence. Thank you.
At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith for the code of ethics.
Members of council, it's our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflict events. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Our next item is the approval of minutes. June 21st, 2022, City Council meeting. July 18th, 2022, special meeting. July 19th, 2022, continued special meeting. And July 19th, 2022, special meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes. Motion to approve. We've got a, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? At this time, we'll call for adoption of the agenda. Make a motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A is to adopt a resolution and approve a contract for services with WK Dixon to apply for local assistance stormwater infrastructure investments funding. Item B is to adopt a resolution to accept the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, American Rescue Plan Act, funding for the infrastructure projects in downtown Burlington. Item C, to adopt a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with North State Communications LLC, Loomis Fiber, for the purpose of setting up a point-of-presence POP site to provide high-speed broadband services within the Burlington and Alamance area on property located at 924 South Beaumont Street. Approval of a lease agreement is contingent upon city attorney's approval. Item D, to approve an extension of premises on September 23rd, 2022, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM during the Phoenix Fourth Friday Special Event hosted by Burlington Recreation and Parks to allow the servant of alcohol in designated areas, contingent upon meeting all requirements of ABC permitting and approval of certificates of insurance. Item E, to adopt a revised City of Burlington pay grade plan and reclassify the Assistant City Manager classification from a Level 44 to a Level 48 effective upon City Council approval to reflect current market conditions as determined by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. Item F, to approve budget amendment 2023-05 Capital Project Ordinance for the White's Kennel Road Sewer Extension. Item G, to approve budget amendment 2023-06 to accept a Community Forward Grant from Impact Alamance to host a mental health and wellness conference at North Park. Item H, to approve budget amendment 2023-07 to fund resources related to enhanced downtown service efforts and approve two new parks maintenance turf technician Level 19 positions as recommended, effective upon City Council approval. Item I, to approve budget amendment 2023-08 for waterproofing services at Fairchild Community Center. Item J, to approve budget amendment 2023-09 to make modifications to the ARPA grant fund ordinance. Item K, to award a lease purchase funding agreement with Truist Bank, approve budget amendment 2023-10, and authorize the mayor, city manager, director of finance and risk management, and the city clerk to execute the financing documents contingent upon city attorney approval. Item L, to approve budget amendment 2023-11 for fiscal year 2021-22 capital projects and equipment carried forward. Item M, to approve budget amendment 2023-12 and adopt a revised City of Burlington pay grade plan and reclassify the animal services officers' classification from Level 19 to a Level 22, effective upon City Council approval to reflect current market conditions as determined by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. Item N, to approve budget amendment 2023-13 for allocation of rehab loan program income to the CDBG project for the completion of the Vaughn Road sidewalk improvements. And item O, to approve budget amendment 2023-14 and approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Barry Dunn McNeil &amp; Parker LLC, DBA Barry Dunn, to provide consultant services for the development of a Recreation and Parks master plan. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. So moved. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Our next item are public hearings. Item one, a public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone properties on general business to be rezoned to high-density residential, limited use, HDR LU. The property is located on the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Witsit Street, addressed as 310 Cleveland, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 133839. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson. Jamie?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This item is a request to rezone property zone general business to high-density residential, limited use. Property is shown here, highlighted with the teal hatch. This is the existing zoning map. The property is located at the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Witsit Street, addressed as 310 Cleveland Avenue. Per UDO Section 318, limited use zoning districts, the rezoning to high-density residential, limited use would exclusively allow the following principal uses. The applicant is requesting single-family attached and single-family detached. The future land use designation for this area calls for the area to be traditional residential. This is consistent with the request for the rezoning, and it complements the existing residential in the surrounding areas. At the June 27th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended unanimous approval of this request. This item was also briefed to you at the July 19th work session, and staff is recommending approval with consistency statement sheet option one included in your packet. I'm not sure if the applicant comments.
Is applicant present?
So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Jamie or staff?
Um, what is, like, what are we trying to do? Is that?
Do you want them to come up?
Yeah. Yeah, if you'll hang on just a second. Let's see if council has any questions, and then we'll allow public, public requests. Everybody, everybody good? Kathy, you good?
Yeah.
Yep.
There is a portion of the property that has a single-family home, and the larger portion is vacant. So what the applicant is looking to do is rezone the property from general business to, to the high-density residential to expand additional residential uses on the property.
So it doesn't have nothing to do, like, with him selling his business or anything? They're just residential enough?
It has nothing to do with, as far as we know, it has nothing to do with him selling his business. That's not part of the, a rezoning application.
Oh.
What, what he's seeking is a rezoning to only allow single-family attached and single-family detached uses on the property. So no other uses that would be allowed under the current, under the proposed zoning would be allowed there.
And I know on the letter it said that it was somewhere around 300 feet, because there's a restaurant right there.
The, so in accordance with our ordinance, property owners within 300 feet of the rezoning boundary get sent notification letters. That's, that's the reference there.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, the owner is here?
No.
I'm being told that the owner of the property is here. I'm not sure.
The restaurant? Or Brock? 310.
For 310. Is the owner from 310 Cleveland here? Yes.
Public hearing.
What do you mean about the owner?
So, hey, this is a public hearing. So at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. That way, we can get petitioners for information on record. So if anyone on this side of the room would like to make public comments or ask any additional questions about this project, would you please come forward? And welcome, and just state your name and address for the city clerk. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Dow, and I live at Stoke Street, right behind that. And we've had some problems with loud music, break-ins, drugs over there in that area, with some apartments that are down there. And my wife's car just got broke in a few weeks ago over there. So my question is, is it single housing or is it going to be apartments over there? That's what my question was on that, because I don't understand this, this map here.
Jamie?
Yeah, so what, what they're asking for is a rezoning to only allow single-family detached and single-family attached. So that's a traditional single-family home or a single fam, that would be single-family detached, and then single-family attached could be a duplex, a triplex, but not a multi-family apartment-style building.
Okay.
If, if somebody was to seek that down the road, should the council approve the rezoning, they'd have to come back for some sort of amendment. That would be in violation of what the zoning would be allowed for.
Okay, what about the property value of those houses that are around there? I know it ain't a great neighborhood, but would that make the property value go down if I was to sell my, my property? Because it's a lot of things happening in that neighborhood since the older people has died out, and these new people are coming in, buying up stuff, and this, whoever moves in, moves in, and they lumped trouble, basically. Would that make the property value go down as far as those houses being up there? A duplex is multi-level, is what you're saying, right?
Well, no, a duplex could be side by side, or, you know, there isn't anything to prevent it from being multi-level either, but the traditional duplex is, you know, how's, you know, what looks to be like a single-family but attached with zero lot line next to it.
Okay.
I, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't speak to the, to the tax value or how it may affect the properties in the area. What, what staff is recommending is approval of the request as it would be more in line with the residential character of the area. So this would, this would, this rezoning would allow for that.
As opposed to something that may, would not be compatible? And staff.
A commercial type use that would be allowed currently under a general business.
There's just a lot of trouble going on over there right now. I just kind of oppose it, really. But I guess it's for another date, I guess.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dow. Any other comments from this side of the room? Please come, please come forward, if you don't mind. It's just really important to get everyone's information into the minutes. So just state your name and address for the record, please.
Ramferry Mendoza. It's just that there were.
Your address?
Huh?
Your address?
12 Fifth 3 Eastway Avenue.
Thank you.
It's just that some of, some people that are here don't speak English, and they're just worried and wondering what's going on, or they're going to have to move their places. But she explained that it was just notifying us.
Yes.
Because my father also has a restaurant right there, and I know in the letter it said that they're rezoning, but planning something. I don't know if they're going to build something or not. So he was getting worried about them trying to buy the restaurant out or something.
Yeah.
But other than that, he just wanted to know what was going on.
Yeah, this is, this request is just on that parcel of property that is notated up here. For, for that, for the owner of that parcel to be able to put homes either single-family detached or, or otherwise as.
Single-family detached or attached.
Or attached.
All right.
So it has nothing to do with any of the other surrounding properties other than the fact that we want to notify you. So if you have any questions, you can come ask.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Jamie, what's the size of that property, that lot?
None. I can look that up for you.
Point, point six, seven acres.
Point six, seven acres?
A little over half an acre. So the realization of it is, in terms of what can be built there, it's going to be restricted by zoning in terms of parking and so forth, too.
Setback.
Setbacks. So it's not like it can come, you know, all the way to the street. So I can't tell you exactly how many, how big the units would be, but certainly there'd be limitations on that development of that particular site.
Sure.
Aye. Anyone else on this side of the room? Like to speak. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to participate in public hearing? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public comments, public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the rezoning request.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property zone general business to be rezoned to high-density residential, limited use, HDR-LU. The property is located on the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Witsit Street, addressed as 310 Cleveland, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 133839. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item, item two. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting the updated Local Historic Overlay LHO Design Standards and associated process assessment document. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again to review this request.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council again. So as a reminder, this item was presented to you at the July 19th City Council meeting as a work session item. And I'll just give some quick background, so you may have heard some of this before. As one of the 51 certified local governments in the state of North Carolina, the City of Burlington was able to submit a grant application to update its existing local historic district standards. In April 2021, the City Council authorized staff to submit an application for this grant, and in July 2021, the State Historic Preservation Office awarded this grant. After a competitive selection process, the city contracted with the Walker Collaborative, Mr. Philip Walker, who's here tonight, and Mr. Keith Covington, to undergo the project. So the draft standards, which are in front of you for tonight, for consideration, have really been based upon a collaborative approach with stakeholder groups and public meetings held throughout the process. The update, which also included a process assessment document that was included as well, has been prepared with three main overarching goals in mind, to modernize the standard. To modernize the standards, create user-friendly standards, and streamline the process. As part of this process, an advisory committee with about 15 members was created. They met three, three times throughout the process. And then there were also several public meetings that were held as well during April, May, and June. We received public citizen input from all of the different meetings and the advisory committee. And with that in mind, the selected consultants, along with staff, prepared a draft. This went to the Historic Preservation Commission on June 8th, 2022. And at that meeting, they recommended unanimous approval of the design standards as well as the process assessment document. At the July 11th special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they also recommended unanimous approval. I should also mention that as part of the process, the State Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed and approved the draft. So tonight, we'll have a short presentation from the consultants and staff, which outlines the project as well as several other proposed edits that were discussed during the July 19th City Council Work Session Meeting. But just as a reminder, included on our staff report, staff is recommending approval of this as per Option 2 in your consistency statement. So I'll turn it over to Phil to just go through our, our short presentation.
And, and you're at the controls, right?
I am.
Okay. Well, good evening. Good to be back in Burlington again. So what I'm going to present to you, and I'll try to be fairly concise, but it may look familiar because it's essentially the same presentation we did before, but we may, you know, we have a few new recommendations that were based on the input that we received during the workshop. So if you want to go to the next slide, and you can see who all is involved with the project. Actually, you know what? That's the guidelines, not the presentation part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you need to, I think if you go ahead, like at the beginning, there you go. Bingo. Okay. So, of course, you can see on the right the list of project advisory committee members. And if you want to go to the next slide, you know, what we'll discuss is, I'll give you a little bit of an overview again on the project. Talk about process recommendations. Actually, Jamie's going to present those. That's all about the CO, COA approval process. Then I'm going to go over a few edits that we recommend that really came out of the workshop last time I was in town. And then we can talk about the standards in general. If you have specific questions, we can go right to those and talk about them and then just have a discussion. So, so that's what we'll do. If you want to go to the next one. And by now, you probably know what design standards are, but just to refresh your memory, you know, they, they, four, the two districts that you have, they control new development, demolition of existing buildings, additions, alterations, that sort of thing. There's plenty of state legislation that, that allows these kind of districts. In your local legislation, the Unified Development Code, there are provisions for these overlays. This will ultimately hopefully be adopted by you, the city council. Planning and zoning already recommended approval back in July. As you know, there are two districts. One is the Glencoe Mill Village District and the other is the West Davis Fountain Place District. The, the whole program is administered by the Preservation Commission with the help of staff. And to have, to be able to make any changes, significant changes, not interior changes, you need to get a certificate of appropriateness. If you want to go to the next slide. And here's the language, and I know you can all read it, but I'll just kind of try to summarize it real quickly. This is right out of the UDO as to what the intent of the overlay program is. So basically, you know, conservation of properties, to protect, safeguard, and conserve the heritage of the city and individual properties, to educate and enrich residents and citizens, to foster civic beauty, stabilize and enhance property values, and contribute to the improvement of the general health and welfare of the city. If you want to go to the next one. So there were, and actually Jamie mentioned these three, but I'll repeat them again. Three particular goals, not just getting a new set of design standards, but in particular, modernizing your standards. For example, you know, we talked about materials the last time I was here. There are a lot of new materials that just didn't exist or weren't used regularly when these standards were first written. So that's one thing they address. Looking for opportunities to streamline the process, you know, looking at ways that maybe we could take what's a major, you know, an application that has to go before the full commission and be able to make some of those minors that get an administrative approval, and even in some cases, some minors shifting over to, to not requiring a COA. So we made some progress on that. And then really just creating a user-friendly document. The, the existing ones lack a table of contents. We obviously have a table of contents, but it even includes hyperlinks, so if you're looking at it digitally as a PDF, you click and you go right to. So that, those are just kind of three of the key goals. If you want to go to the next. This is the process we've been through, starting back in February. We've got a lot of, in the spring, we got a lot of public engagement. In April, I think it was mid-April, we prepared the draft document. And then since then, it's really been a matter of review and, you know, going through the process. So here we are at the city, well, City Council Workshop was the last one. Of course, this is the hearing. This is the final major step, we hope, in the process. So if you want to go to the next one.
Sure. So as I mentioned, we also evaluated the, the process by which the HPC reviews applications, staff reviews applications, and just came up with a number of recommendations that have been included in the packet that we're hoping that you consider adopting as part of this process too. I'm not going to go through each and every single one of them. Just to highlight a couple, it's important to continue ongoing training. As you know, the, the Historic Preservation Commission serves in many different roles depending upon the type of application that they have, whether it be advisory through a legislative matter or quasi-judicial through a COA application. So it's important to keep up to date as part of the training and also as part of the certified local government requirements. Just highlighting a couple others. Staff is also recommending the Design Review Committee or Design Consultation Committee. This would be an optional meeting that applicants or property owners could meet and get some initial feedback and assistance with, with their project. Staff also does conduct pre-application conference meetings too, but this would be a group of members that could also include ex-HPC members so that, or architects or builders, so members of the public would have some feedback and get some informal, non-binding assistance as they go through the process. Obviously, we would like to continue updating our website and keeping everything fresh and accurate. One of the recommendations similar to what we deal with the Unified Development Ordinance is to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and also City Council on a regular basis to review and update and, and provide recommendations to Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. We would expect to do hopefully the same thing with, with you guys on any text amendments that would be needed for the design standards. Some of these other items, HPC could set special meetings to assist applicants considering a position specifically designated for the HPC and historic preservation is another recommendation. As Phil mentioned, there's a number of shifts in the standards from major to minor and minor to administrative. So we do anticipate more applications coming in at the staff level. And then just looking at, you know, ways to broadly interpret and provide a, an expedited, more user-friendly approach. We also have standards in here now that address emergency situations and immediate restoration for utility services or, or tree removals. So those are just some of the recommendations that we have as part of the process assessment document.
Okay. So I'm going to present, just, we have five recommendations for actually changing the document from where it is now as a draft. The first one is, if you remember, we've talked about this matrix of major, minor, no COA. The first page of that is all about work that's conducted in a public right of way. So the recommendation is to take all of those items and ship them over to no COA. However, if it's currently one we were shown as major, then it would need to go before the HPC as a kind of a cursory review. So that's, that's the first of five recommended changes. The second one is, even though we have provisions for emergency situations, we want to reference the City Code, Section 14-34, so that we just kind of reinforce that notion about emergency situations so that someone doesn't have to go through the full process when something needs to be dealt with in a timely way. Number three is to provide additional flexibility by all of, all of the, in the, the matrix for materials. Right now, the way it's written, there's, there are three columns. There's, there's permitted, I think it's called, maybe, and prohibited. And we're suggesting that we take all of the prohibites and shift them over to maybes. Now, keep in mind, we still have texts in the document that addresses materials, but at least every material would be considered, even though, you know, some particular materials might be discouraged in the standards. So that's the third one. If you want to go to the next page. The fourth is to, we have a series of these Preser, National Park Service, what they call Preservation Briefs. If you want to learn more about a particular subject, you can click onto a hyperlink. And we just want to make it clear, have clear language that those are just, those are not standards, it's just supplemental information. So that's the fourth one. And then the final change would be to add something in the, in the major-minor matrix, to add something new. This would be under minor work. And the language would be substitution of exterior building materials with alternate like materials for new construction, additions to a building, or new accessory structures projects. So in other words, all new construction, we're saying, look, if it's a like material, then that could be permitted administratively. So those are the five changes, and a lot of those came out of our last trip here.
And, and the last one, just to clarify, deals with projects that have already been approved by the HPC. So it's not as if the HPC hasn't already seen the application. This is like in a situation where there may be a shortage, shortage of materials and, and there needs to be some substitution, and we were, we're seeing that regularly right now. So that would come through as a, as a minor work.
Oh, yeah, and really the rest of it, I guess we can kind of run through the table of contents again since it kind of shows the layout of the document. But obviously, the first section is kind of introductory, some of the merits of historic overlays. The next section is about the process, you know, for approvals. Section C is the historic context, all about the districts and different types of architecture and so forth. Section D is the real meat of it, you know, where it starts with the actual standards. And we have standards for existing buildings. That's, that's a lot of the focus. Then there are also standards for additions, that's Section 2 in that second column. New buildings is the third section. And then outbuildings and sites is the fourth. And if you go to the next page, we've got building relocations, demolitions, and demolition by neglect. And then disaster preparedness, signage, and murals, and the rest are the appendix. So that's pretty much it. So I don't know if there are any specific pages you want us to forward to or?
Anything specific? Council questions or?
We've spent considerable time on this.
Lengthy process, well-engaged.
I've said no, no stone was left unturned during this project. It's quite amazing.
And, and the premise is that we treat this like the UDO and then periodically bring it up for just edits or small changes that we see.
Yeah, we view this as a living document, so, and, and, you know, some of this is brand new. So we'll, we'll see how it works and there's always the opportunity to make changes and tweaks.
I think we've all learned from the, the UDO process that no matter how thorough people wants to be, we don't foresee everything. And that's why now I think on a quarterly basis, we, we go through that. And this is to some degree no different. I mean, a question, maybe I should know the answer, but I don't. The last time these, this process has been updated?
The standards?
Yeah.
The standards are over 20, 20 years old, but it, there was a minor amendment when 160D was modified to bring the standards, the, the title of the standards from Guidelines to Standards. And that was essentially it.
Yeah, the cover of the existing ones says amended July 20th, 2021. So periodically it was updated.
That was really to, to make that change, but it hasn't been a major overhaul.
1994?
Wow. It'd been a while, in other words. Been a good while. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments concerning this agenda item. Are there any comments from this side of the room? Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Please come forward and state your name and address and--
Hi. I'm Katie Beth Schultz, and I live at 303 South Fisher Street. Okay. And, and I grew up here, but I'm fairly new to the area. I've been gone for a while, so I'm back. So I just have a few questions. So what are the credentials that someone had to have to be on the advisory board? That was made to do all of this?
So we, the advisory board was a, a group of people involved. Residents from both historic districts, from West Davis and Glencoe. There was also members of the HPC, Historic Preservation Commission. There was also members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were architects and builders, staff. Let's see, who else am I missing?
Preservation Burlington, did they?
Preservation Burlington, yes, they were very involved as well. And just any, and all of those meetings have been recorded and also on the website as well as all of the public meetings as part of the process.
Okay, cool. Okay. And then is it possible, like is this public? Like can I get this presentation just because it was hard to see a little bit?
Sure. All of the presentations are on the website.
Okay.
After tonight, we'll, we'll do this as well.
Perfect.
This is, this, this presentation, form of it is also on the website from other meetings too.
Yeah, it's the latest, right?
And if you'll get Beth Beverly after the meeting, she can show you how to access that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, and then just so I understand correctly, it was stated that all materials are going to be under a maybe column? And there's going to be no prohibited materials? Is that correct?
Yeah, we can, you can start.
Yeah, so, so there are no, the column that didn't say prohibited is, is gone essentially. So now it's either permitted or maybe. However, I will say, if you read the, the text in the section on materials, it does say that there are certain things that they don't want to allow, like vinyl siding put on an existing historic building, for example. Things like that, vinyl windows, other, other things like that. So it still addresses, it doesn't just throw the gates wide open for any kind of material, but we, we did decide to at least give consideration to any material.
Okay.
We, we didn't open the gates wide open, but we didn't completely shut them either.
Right. It's a crack.
It's a crack. But it still, it still would be the, the commission's decision or staff, if it was a staff-related minor. Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have more questions?
Um, I think, let's see. Okay, so, am I understanding this correctly? So it's really more, there are still things you can't do, or things, because it doesn't line up with the design of the home at the time. But I guess the way it's worded is a little more digestible? Am I understanding that correctly?
I think there, it still is going to, and, and Jamie and Mr. Walker, please jump in, or counsel for that matter. We still have a commission that's going to oversee this process and operate under the North Carolina General Statute that they're empowered to operate under. And then there are still quasi-judicial and commission matters that they'll be dealing with, and there's still, there are going to be staff-related decisions, but they all are put in place to enforce the guidelines, enforce these standards, but at a level that would be more user-friendly to those that are trying to improve or update or make changes to their property to provide alternatives, but still keeping the historic preservation portion of our goals to the forefront.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Awesome. Thank you, I appreciate y'all's time.
All right, thank you. Great questions. Anyone else from this side of the room, like to speak? Is there anyone from this side of the room? Have any questions or would like to speak about this matter? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consideration of the local historic overlay design standards and process assessment document updates.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, but I, I think the last question asked was, was really good about the term that, I know we talked about was supporting standards. There, there are people in the district, for various reasons over time, that simply were not in a position to make some improvements to their home based on some of the previous standards. Certainly, we want to keep the historic value there, but also, it's these people's homes also. And it's, the reality of it, by not looking at things in a, with a bigger picture, we were creating some issues in some people's homes that was going to eventually not only impact their home, but also their neighbor home or their entire district itself. So it, I think we learned an awful lot, we mentioned this earlier, from the UDO process where nothing stands still, changes occur, and technology has created a, a lot of different options that can be helpful, not only for many, many ways. So that's was part of this process, and we had substantial input from various people. And, and let me say before I bid this motion, we certainly appreciate the people on, on the HPC commission, people who live in the district, but also, I will say, our planning staff.
Yes.
Our planning staff really stepped up. And they stepped up during a time when they were about half-staffed, if we want to go back into the history of this. There were some people that did have gray hair before it started. But the truth-
David Cheek, is that what you're talking about, David Cheek?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, David's still been having it.
Yeah, so he's, he came out pretty well. But the truth of the matter is, is that not only has things changed, and we bought, Miss Lawson is providing wonderful leadership, but we've now been able to, to, to attract a really qualified staff, which is absolutely essential in planning to administer this along with everything else they have to do in terms of the development climate we have now. So with that being said, this is a pretty long motion.
Harold, before, before you do that, I'd like to say something. Apparently, my mic was not turned on before. But I think what we tried to do, and, and everybody who worked on this tried to do, was to make the process less onerous, but still hold up the importance that we believe that the historic district is for our community. So I, I think it's necessary that, not just talking about materials here, but we're also talking about how much we value the people who live in the district and how they're willing to go through the process in order to maintain the quality of the historic district as it stands. But I just, we're talking about, you know, the standards, but I think the overall idea is, this is important to us, and we want it to work for people. Excuse my voice.
So, the motion. I make a motion to recommend approval of the process assessment document and the local historic overlay LHO district's design standards with the following changes to be incorporated. To ensure the city has appropriate purview regarding work in the right-of-way page B7, which shifts all work items in the public right-of-way section from the minor and major work metric to the non-COA column, and add a note for any of these items that are currently listed as a major COA to require staff to present those items to the HPC for their review and recommendation. To help provide further clarification to see the authority to take immediate action in emergency situations, and add a reference to city code section 1234 on the section D5, which Jamie had mentioned earlier. Emergent situations could be, could be weather, hurricanes, it could be situations where there's some property damage. We unfortunately had a fire last year in the district. I set some examples there. To provide additional flexibility to the HPC and staff in processing COAs, and shift all items currently listed as under the prohibited column in the building materials matrix to the maybe column. And that was what you had mentioned earlier. To help clarify that references to federal briefs are not part of the standards, label each call-out box for federal briefs where this, this information is supplementary and is not part of these standards for regulatory purposes. That's just a, the way that is actually written in the document itself in terms of the call-out for the federal briefs. That's an explanation of that process. To help reduce delays and major costs for new construction already approved by the HPC in the minor and major work metric, matrix, excuse me, and add an item under the minor work column for substitution of exterior building materials with alternative like materials for new construction additions to a building or new accessory structure projects. We haven't, what we've heard from people who've had some interest in new construction based on the previous standards, it was going to be pretty difficult to do that construction because some of the materials was very difficult to obtain. Now, some of that could have been as a result of the pandemic and the marketplace, but certainly that was an option. The motion is based upon the consistency of the comprehensive plan in that the land use plan calls for the celebration, encouragement, support, and rehabilitation of historic buildings. Section two, character and identity goal one, calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local charter. Section two, character and identity goal one, again, recommendation calls to encourage the preservation and the continued use of historic buildings, districts, landmarks, and landscapes. Section two, character and identity goal one, recommendation calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. We feel like this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for the historic preservation of the city's historic resources. The local historic overlay, actually called LHO district, designs and standards and process assessment documents complement the historic preservation of the city's historic resources.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Hite. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate you being here, and thank you, Jamie, for all your work on that item. Our next item is unfinished business. I will read item three, but I have a caveat. City council will consider request to amend the city of Burlington's local historic district overlay boundary in order to remove the following four properties from the district. That's 1004, 1010, 1016, and 1022 West Davis Street, also identified as Alamance County tax identification numbers 125084, 125089, 125539, and 125546, respectively. The properties are currently zoned medium-density residential, MDR, and the local historic overlay, LHO. It would be my request, in the absence of Councilmember Ward tonight, that council would consider a continuance of this item to the October 4th meeting. I'd like to know what your opinion of that would be. I know we've got a pretty lengthy agenda already in September.
I, I have no problem with that. I believe we need to have a full council for that vote.
Do you want to make that in the motion?
I'll be, I'll be more than happy to make the motion. We continue that to the October 4th council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Our next item, item four, under new business, city council will consider the following temporary street closing request during the Walk to End Alzheimer's special event on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. Condition, conditional upon meeting requirements of the city of Burlington's special event permit application. East Front Street from South Spring Street to South Whore Street, and South Main Street from East Front Street to Davis Street. At this time, we'll recognize our supervisor of special events, Sean Etcheverria. You're blocked in over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. I know the Alzheimer's Association has been doing the Walk to End Alzheimer's for quite some time now down in downtown Burlington. The route that they take is pretty straightforward, right up Main Street. They go all the way up to Kitchen Street, and then turn around and come straight back down. They are requesting for that closure of Front Street and Main Street for the purpose of the grand start and finish of the race, and also to be more accessible to those who might be wheelchair-bound or what have you. Do y'all, is there any particular questions about the event itself or the street closure?
Questions from council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Our next item is the oath of office for a newly appointed city manager, Craig Honeycutt. I know everyone's going to be so disappointed to see David Cheek go, but it was time. So- So at this time, we'll call on city clerk Beverly Smith. Craig, there's no pressure now, okay?
I state your name.
I, Craig Honeycutt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are?
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of city manager.
The duties in office of city manager.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
David, he got the short version. Well, welcome, Craig. And on that subject, I will want, and I'm sure all the council may want to have comments on this, but anytime you have a transition through a city manager into an interim and then to a new hire, it's tough on staff, it's tough on council, and there's a lot of things that we've got to really try to keep moving forward. And city staff did an excellent job, David. Thank you for stepping up and being part of this. And Craig, welcome home, and glad to have you on board.
Think you said it all, Mayor.
It was almost seamless, guys. We were very fortunate to have the access to David at the time he came up, and Craig was certainly the presterbution when you were interested in coming back and applying for the job.
Well, welcome on board. At this time, we'll move into our public comment period. I'll call them public comments. Public comments is for topics that are not on our agenda, so we're asking for those comments to be items that are not on tonight's agenda. Each speaker's asked to limit comments to five minutes. At this time, we'll call on John Cole. I think the topic is city park. Is John still with us? Welcome, Mr. Cole. Please state your name and address.
John Cole, live a waverly way, right by the city park.
Thank you.
That's why I'm here. To tie into the gentleman that was talking about this historical stuff, this kind of goes along with that. Lived here all my life, been by the city park for almost 40 years. My problem is, the city park now looks like they're about to film a Tarzan movie, isn't it? And I'm wondering, I know all about the Jordan rules. I know about the money. I know all about that. My problem is, how bad does it have to get before somebody takes an interest in trying to make the park look like it used to look? I can remember every Friday, not when the Carisso Festival's going on, but every Friday, city employees would descend on the park to trim, mow, upkeep, not just the softball fields, the entire park. And now you can't see through the park. They've already had a murder in the park, and there's going to be more, because you can't see in there. It looks like a jungle. You can't see, there's, the water's completely covered. The culvert that was on Church Street, you can't see anymore. I've seen rats in there, the biggest cats, snakes everywhere. I'm in there every day, just about. I don't walk in there this time of year because I'm a little bit nervous about it, to be honest with you. Wintertime, a little bit more. You can actually stand on Overbrook and sit down on Charleston Avenue, a good ways. But the problem is, these environmentalists that came in here and said, "We need to have this, this little growth here to filter this water." And that's why the water floods now, because the water can't flow through there. There's stuff that has washed to the point where water can't get through there anymore. Leaves that have fell in the creek that are never cleaned up anymore. It just, if it falls, it falls. And I'm just wondering how bad it's, because every year, the stuff's not cut back. Like, if you don't cut something back into your yard, if you don't prune it, sometime, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's what's happened here. Stuff's not been pruned back, and each year, because of the lack of pruning, it gets worse, so it doesn't die back as soon. If that makes sense. I mean, you know, when wintertime comes, stuff dies back to the point where you actually can see down in the park because the leaves are gone, the foliage- can see down in the park because the leaves are gone, the foliage around the creek is gone. But it's, it's a danger. And to be honest with you, I grew up in the park. I mean, I played basketball games there on Sundays, intense basketball game. Tennis, grew up playing football over here on the softball fields, played softball there, raised a child in the park. Rides, playgrounds, I wouldn't take a kid over there now for nothing. And I've heard people at the city, people that do the city stuff over there on Summit Avenue say the same thing. And that's pretty sad because when I grew up, I'm not from New York, I'm from Burlington, but that was my central park. And you talk about all this historical stuff and people's property values and taking care of that, why ain't the city taking care of what I consider a gem? I worked in Greensboro my entire career as a blood-icareer. And I saw people in Greensboro come out and take care of parks around the city that weren't their major parks. And I mean, take care of. Last time I checked, the city park is our major park, but it doesn't look like it anymore. It's really kind of sad. And I say that because I live behind it. But at the same time, it's right in the middle of town, people see it every day. And it's just, I'm wondering what can be done, if anything. I'm not naive, I know money rules, I get that. But at some point, we're going to lose an icon of the city. We may have already done so, I'm not sure about that, but I just, I hope that, I didn't come here tonight knowing that this other gentleman was going to do this historical thing, but it kind of ties into that, if you think about it.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if anything can be done about it, but I know I'm not the only one that feels this way. I'm not the only one. I see people, a lot of the same people, almost daily, winter, summer, it doesn't matter. But it's just sad that it's gotten to this point and it needs to change, I think, for a lot of, for safety, for one, but for aesthetics and how it used to be, sounds like I'm living in the past, I don't have a follow with that. I think I've reached a point in my life at my age to look back a little bit, and that's what I'm trying to do. So I want it to be like it once was, to where more people can come and enjoy and do so safely. So thank the council for my, you know, taking my concerns and hopefully they don't fall on deaf ears.
Yep. I do think that's worth addressing a little bit, if council would agree. We have, that goes back a ways. I think it goes back to 2006 when that particular stream, Alamance Creek, was deemed an impaired stream and it was put into a conservation program.
What does impaired actually mean?
That's for other people, I can't tell.
Okay, I'm just curious.
But let's fast forward to where we're at today. We all have known for quite some time that that's a danger and it's an eyesore, but we couldn't touch it by agreement, by contractual agreement, by state law. We were not allowed to prune it, touch it, trim it, do anything in the water area, watershed area there, within so many feet of the bank. So we started having a series of meetings about three years ago. Senator Rick Gunn was very instrumental in getting us a platform with the folks in Raleigh. I remember the meeting well with Tim Bumgarner. We used some of our crime statistics, like you alluded to, and pleaded our case. And they readily admitted that the program they put us in worked good in rural areas, but it was not really feasible for urban areas. And they knew that they made a mistake. But consequently, to get out of it, to get out of the agreement, there had to be some credits purchased from the federal government, I think, under the Clean Water Act. And that was, Harold helped me, 1.6 million or so, give or take. So Senator Gunn was very instrumental in getting some funding put into the budget to get us out from under it. So we are now out from under that and we can start addressing some of the issues that you've brought up. And Tony, I don't know if it's, if we're at a point where we can give an update on kind of a timeline on some of that, or if I'm putting you on the spot, we'll defer it and maybe get you some information?
Well, part of, and Brian can attest to this. I remember when they came, after we had the unfortunate incident where somebody was killed, they came in, they said, "We're going to put lights in the park and stuff." That part about, you can't see the lights anymore because it's grown up to the point where-
And I think some of that, most of that's been addressed in a, in a plan. It now has to be enacted.
And Barbara, and Amy Barber, who's not here, might be able to speak to this better than I am, but yes, we are doing some, in fact, they just went through and did some and killed some invasive stuff and everything, so they're pending it out. It's a process. This was, we started that last year and this is the second year of that. I'm hoping it's going to get a lot better. I agree with you that it doesn't look like it used to look and certainly, we want it to be visible, you know, people go in the park, we want it to be seen so that nobody's hiding in there or anything like that, so. But it is in process. And Bob, I don't know, Bob, can you answer it any better than, when it's?
No, that's, it's an iterative process where we go in and remove vegetation, do selective pruning. We removed a lot of trees last year as part of the other project, a lot of dead trees that were all on the streambank and whatnot. And so now there's a process, iterative process to remove the vegetation that we don't want there, which may be invasives or the improper selection. But we need to leave a buffer there as part of the rules to protect water quality. So it's kind of a trade-off that as we trim, we have to still maintain something, so that's why I said it's iterative. And they go in and they prune out and there's certain times of the year where we need to do that to make sure we're getting the correct vegetation cut and-
Well, I can only say, it's way above my pay grade, by the way, way above. But I remember when I was younger, like I just stated, that creek was much cleaner, it flowed, it was clear. Now, water doesn't even flow. I stopped on the big bridge right there in the old Central Park area where the Carousel is. And there is so much debris that had washed underneath that bridge, water couldn't get through there. That's why it floods all the time. I mean, it can, we can have a shower and it'll flood because water can't flow through there.
I think in the essence of time, I think it's safe to say you're going to see some significance.
I hope so. I hope so.
Your comments are not falling on deaf ears, but the plan's already been put into motion and this council's behind it 100%. And David don't care anymore, but Craig does.
Can I say that I'm hopeful, I'm getting a response that I wouldn't expect, to be honest with you, because I didn't want to stoke.
Yep.
But I'm hopeful that what you say is going to come to pass.
It will.
Probably not to my liking, but at least I can already see some stuff that's been done, so hopefully that's going to continue.
Yep.
And I appreciate you.
Thank you-
Thank you.
-for your time. And I appreciate everyone's indulgence while we went through it.
It may take a while.
And I think that was important and I'm glad you asked the question.
And I'll add to that, and I have three grandsons that stays on me all the time. The Carousel will open sooner or later, will it not, Tony?
I promise you, yes, sir.
And hopefully the train will be back in-
In the process too, yes, sir.
Unfortunately, the train situation, I believe I can say this, can be traced back to excessive water coming down to the creek that is now, the track is taken, is undermined the track for the train. So that's become a real liability issue. There were trees taken out on the west side of the park-
Yes, sir. Because there-
Last year.
Last year, there had some diseased trees, but the-
Close to 100 trees came out.
Last year. Another thing we've got to remember though, too, is growth is great, we all need growth, but the more houses we build, the more streets we pave, the more runoff of water it is. And that's just created some substantial issues. We face the same issue at Willowbrook Park, at City Park. As growth continues, that's something that we still deal with.
All right, our next public comment is Sarah Vincent.
I had found out thinking that we would be addressing the rezoning, so-
Okay. I thought so, thank you. And next is Rachel Finkelstein.
Keep that, keep that going, yeah.
Okay. So that's all we have with public comments. Moving on to council comments. Couple of things I do want to bring up from during council comments. One is I want to recognize our Chief Long and our Burlington PD for a couple of recent activities that they've been involved in. On July 29, Kim and I, on behalf of the City Council, attended the Junior Police Academy's graduation ceremony and it was absolutely phenomenal. Chief, I'm so proud of you guys. So we were, presented a plaque that we can put up. And, you know, it was a very well-run event. It was 29 cadets, is that right? And from all around our community. And really, they showed off their skills and disciplines that they acquired during the program. And the many volunteers that it takes to make this a successful program is phenomenal and our BPD is a big, big part of that. And I'd like to thank them for their commitment to, one, to our young people and, two, to support this program that I believe dates back to Chief Glenn? Under his leadership. So that was really a phenomenal event and it was so impressive, I could talk about it for all night. And then that same day was really an overlap training day for our staff, police staff, and we were able to visit with them and watch firsthand their commitment to training and what they do to prepare themselves. They went through a, they participated in a mock scenario of a school shooting and really went through it and trained at the highest level. We were invited, we were there to watch them and learn what they were preparing for. And this training is a critical piece of our preparedness should the need engage, the need ever arise to engage our police. And God forbid, we hope it does not. I know it was a long day and if you saw what they went through and what they wear to train and how they prepare to train, both mentally, physically, and as a team, it is impressive and I'm so proud of them. I think everyone in this room should be. Chief, I know that was a tough day, long day. So congratulations on that. Appreciate it. And then lastly, we're all very fortunate as council and staff to participate in National Night Out earlier this month. And it was really a great evening. We got to visit many locations that hosted activities for us. You know, we really rely on the community to organize these respective community events. And it, but it does require quite a bit of work from staff and from PD and getting everybody around. And it just takes a lot of effort to make that night a success, not just those that are hosting the events, but everyone that really goes out and attends them. And our police and fire are heavily engaged and it's just pretty cool to see that happen. And I want to tell everybody thanks for that as well. That's all I have. Any other council comments? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.